...meeting order for the Department of Justice. Of the Tallahassee Public Works Authority. Second item on the agenda, approve or reject public works purchase orders. Make a motion, Cooper. We have a motion. And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number three, public forum for public works, is there anyone, yes ma'am?
I was wondering about y'all's water rates and how they're actually done and what they are. I know that they've, the people, I mean John and Mary have been really busy, so they haven't had time to get those to me. But I was wondering how you guys figure them.
I think it discusses many times, the actual rural water.
No, it's actually for the town, like your, the town's water.
You're wondering what the rate schedule is.
Yeah, what the rate schedules.
They have a printout that they can give you. How much the first thousand, isn't that what you're asking?
Well, not just the first thousand, but how you guys figure it. Even when I look at how your water rates are, it's hard as me as a citizen to understand how you guys get where you get in the end. Do you understand? So I was wondering, is it like when you get, say like if you spend, or you use five thousand, two hundred, you know? How do you guys get to that part? Because when you say four thousand per one thousand. So I don't really understand how it's all added together. Do you understand? Because it's broken into pieces.
Three different segments, right?
Three or four different segments.
Well, I think I know, but it's not my job to know that. So I would say, John, you can explain it.
The computer program, to go in there and look, it is one point zero zero two six, whatever. And so I don't even, I just know that's what it said. And Mary was making me bring that over. She had it going.
So what you're hoping to know is if it's up or if there's a fraction in there.
Right, for your first thousand, and I know that there's a cost for your first thousand. And then like usually another two thousand, and then four thousand, and anything over five thousand. Then your commercial rates are different. But, you know, when I look at it, and I try to figure it out from what little I know, that's why I wanted current rates. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I was just wondering if you guys could like help educate me.
See, I have mine.
Donna, did you get that? I'm sure he can get it for you.
Well, I'm looking for that, and if you're still waiting, you know.
I just meant get it for her like.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow or the next day.
I've got her email address, yeah.
Okay.
I did, I tried to get an email. Just didn't get around to it yet, so I was gonna bring it up.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Yes, sir.
I got a question on water.
Okay.
I'm still getting what, hard to figure out. I'm getting a letter saying that the water's not fit for children and older people. Not for us, not to drink it. When will that be taken care of? Oh, we're supposed to be a lot, a lot of bottles.
If you would like, but.
Remember, we kept curbing that water also.
I put with mine, I clean with mine, I drink it, make it tea, there's nothing in it.
We can have hot water here.
You ever seen it?
It's because we don't have a sink that allows it in, it's set in the bathroom. Anyway, we had this up before. The letter was on turbidity, if I remember reading it. And it was. It was on turbidity, which is the amount of debris in the water. On that, there was not a rush or anything on that.
Organic too.
But if you were, which is our, and organics are turbidity. But if you remember last month, you'll change chemical companies to try and get a better handle on that. And I believe that everybody did that before from that today, mine came in today. Yeah, I can see that.
The letter that you've been receiving is for tri-helmet methanes that are in the water, okay? We're barely going over what they call MCL, which is the maximum contaminant level, okay? The THHMs is not considered a chronic issue. It's over a long time, okay? According to the EPA, you have to drink two liters of water for seventy years every day. And there's a possibility that you can get sick from it. Everybody reacts different to the water. The answer to the question, what are you doing to do it, to take care of it? We are continually working with the plant to try to remove the organics that are in the water right now, okay? As soon as we can remove the organics in the water, then our THHMs will go down.
Yeah, there's one paragraph in there. Saying that older folks and younger folks should not drink it at all.
I have not seen your letter, so I can't, I can't respond on that. All I know is the information that we get from the EPA.
What is it?
Is that something that could be removed or boiling the water, or no?
What about one of the, I know people that have this.
Zero water.
Yeah, the evaporator thing, the distiller, that's what they do.
It costs three hundred dollars for one of those.
It's, I can't speak on just in general. I do know that if you get reverse, it will remove the THH. Okay, now, to say what you're talking about will or not, I don't know.
Depends on the type of distiller.
Carbon filters will also, we're moving. Which brand, I don't know either. Every time is a, you gotta look at what's actually in there. I do know that we are very close in getting the water to where it needs to be. That don't mean we're there, okay? Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I'll have to read this. It says, what should I do? It says there is nothing you need to do unless you have severely compromised immune system, have an infant, or are elderly. These people may be at increased risk and should seek advice about drinking water from their healthcare providers.
I wanted to ask a question. It also states in there that drinking it over like a period of time may increase your risk for cancer. So I mean, if you were born here and you lived on Tallahassee water for the last forty years, is your rate, I mean, is it likely that? I mean, that's what it kind of says, even though you can't prove it.
If you lived there in the state, you were, okay?
Really?
So, but it's, it's like I said, the EPA guideline says you have to drink two liters of water for, I don't know, the letter's saying.
Till you die.
But, but the letter says that if you're an infant, or if you're elderly, you need to talk to your doctor, okay? If your immune system is low, just like the letter says, all the wording in the letter itself comes from the EPA. They are the ones that defines to us what should go out to a public.
Are the regulations on the city water more strict than they are on the bottled water that you buy?
Uh, yes, they are. Bottled water is not regulated.
It's not regulated.
And I've always told you. I don't drink, I drink tap water. I get the same water as you do.
I'm gonna start drinking.
My dad is eighty-two, and he drinks the same water. He drinks orange water. Same, same type of water. Now, if you're on well water, you don't have an issue. This is only for surface water plants.
This is a matter of information, I read the Act of Bill paper, every day. And they designated twelve cities in the state of Oklahoma that had the same problem.
Well, it's one of the twelve.
Yeah, well, there's twelve, it's run by the one five.
One of the twelve, it's.
And like he says, they're organic contaminants. And they are conveyors of disease because they aren't contaminated. But they're not. I'm like you, I drink it every day.
Does anybody know where Henry Calhoun is at?
Yes, we know.
I grew up out there.
That's a problem, you grew up in Calhoun.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Is there anybody else for the public forum? Okay. Item number four, no action. Item number five, approve rejected voice TAL 140103 infrastructure solutions group LLC in the amount of forty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents for water treatment plan and distribution system and treatments. That's one of the smallest ones, whatever period for you, Bill.
It's gotta be a mistake. Shouldn't he be on there, is that what you're saying?
Am I missing the rounds, or what?
Yeah. Make a motion.
Now a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
For that?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Item number six, approve or reject rejected voice TAL 140103 infrastructure solutions group LLC in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for resew system and treatments.
Now, this is one of Metanox, right? Yes. I want to add him to the start here. Yes. Contractor should be here.
Engineering survey and inspection. Make a motion, Cooper. We have a motion. And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
For that?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Item number seven, discussion in action on moving the twelve inch water line between town and the hospital. I don't have any information on that, did you?
I brought that last meeting, and had that off the bill that brought that meeting, last meeting or meeting before that. Bad that. I'm just putting it in, I talked about it. Yes, for the highway project out here coming into town, and the state's putting wetland down the ditch. And our public forum is going to be the wetland.
That twelve inch water line's been there for.
Fifteen years.
The problem.
Fifteen years.
For why would it need to be moved?
Because it's gonna be a wetland. And if it breaks, we can't, our guys can't do that. No, they can't. If it's a federal wetland, they can't go out there unless they call the EPA government.
Is this correct, Bill?
Yeah, you don't want anybody moving the wetlands.
But if there's definitely a wetland over ours, this is, I think it should be moving the. I thought so.
That they are, not off the bill, and off the engineer, department transportation, and they're gonna move it. And I just wanted to bring this up tonight to let you know exactly what's happening.
And whose expense?
Their expense.
Yes. Their expense.
State, department of transportation, they're gonna pay approximately, I don't have much money, Dave, I haven't seen those figures. But they're moving approximately eight hundred feet of twelve inch water line. Because we weren't gonna have our twelve inch line underneath the wetland. And so they're gonna, they're gonna move it.
Where are they moving it to?
No, they're moving it a little bit further south, Lake, Lake.
That seems like a waste of money.
Let's make sure that they involve the town in all of that stuff. And letting them know and all the sets that they're in on, they should have put out some plans. Wait a second. You're talking?
Yes. Go ahead.
You're finished, and yeah, we're saying.
Oh, thank you, you can say.
Just, let's just make sure that they involve the town in that, they should produce plans. That's what I told they should, I told David that. They should get a construction permit for the, per their regulations. And that's why I wanted to make sure.
Did you say that by talking to this man about why they were doing this? All the, we had the pipe there for fifteen years, you say, and now because.
They're putting wetlands on top of all of them.
Yeah.
Two minutes there.
That has to.
They, they destroy the wetlands, and what you gotta do is when you, when you, exactly, like when you destroy something, you have to create the habitat for whoever or whatever lived in the, the habitat in the inside of the. So we're. We should.
Okay, question, has the city beneficial, we know about this, or is this hearsay? Have we got a document that came in saying they were gonna do this?
Nope.
Item number six, for one thing.
But I think they're doing right now, they're kind of, they were trying to figure out what they were gonna do. And when they figure exactly out, they're gonna present it to us. So I'm gonna give everybody, it's a. As the public works commission, when I heard that, I said, well, wait, figure what's going on. Okay, and so that's what this is, is a process of finding out what's going on. I'm trying to let you know what their, what their thought process is.
So we haven't asked anybody to bid, or anything like that? I know we don't, but.
Well, typically, what the old doc will do, will leave the town to go move the line. Just like we did the sewer line and the water line up on the far end, whatever building, bridge. And what we can do is say, okay, this is what we think, the cost and the engineering, the EQ, construction and everything else. And then they will authorize the city to go out and move it. Now, I don't know if they're gonna do that on this one, but that's typically what they do on relocation problems. Just, just general feeling, I mean, I don't know that for a fact, but just a general feeling that they've already contacted colleagues to give them an estimate. So it looks like they're gonna do it through some kind of contingency money or something. Like, do they? They'll be probably the way to EQ red if they need. No doubt. They never do, they don't make them do it. They gotta have an engineer to do it. They need you and the corp engineers to.
Okay, to clarify, you guys are producing water, Donna and I are commissions our distribution of ours, can you just say this?
Okay, I didn't know you were, I thought you were. We're now public works. Y'all are street.
Street, which handles the distribution of water.
Public works is the distribution of land.
Was always Philip or Dick's did on that.
And we need to clarify whether public works or this, or is, that's public works.
That's how I always understood it, that they distributed it. Street department did the distribution. In other words, do you just place, let us know. Thank you. Madam Mayor, will the lines be moved to city property?
I don't know that.
Personal, I mean.
It may, it may have gone off.
But I understand.
They got a hundred.
They may even love them.
My property.
Oh, on your property. So would they buy that property?
No. And they said they wouldn't.
Will they have, will they have to force you to allow them to do that?
Yes, they'd have to force me, but they don't, they don't know exactly where they're at.
It's my understanding that they're going to not have to move it, it's very far.
No, no.
But it's just going to go a section.
A hundred and eighty feet of easement there, and nobody knows exactly what they're wanting to do.
So is there a compensation for that reason? That would be all under, like, internet domain. I just wondered. If we were still gonna own the property. If you have a property, if you have a property, you can own the property. Okay.
Got one grand.
Thank you. All right. Item number eight, discussion in action on public works water and sewer deal.
Yes, I brought that on there because, trying to clarify a few things, we had a few people come to me about problems.
Are they here tonight?
Nope. As a member of the board, and they've asked me, I'm asking for it. And just to clarify that, if anybody asks me to ask something, I'll ask them, I'm ashamed to ask them. And one of them was, if you're inside the city limits, then you have city water, you have that city sewer, right?
Yes.
Is that possible? And the second thing is, I had somebody come to me, and they moved out of their house. And they owe the water bill. And they moved in with one of their friends, and we put that person's bill on the friend's bill. And, and I wanted to clarify, I came down and talked to Bill, and I wanted to make sure that we don't have any more like that, and we don't do any more.
But what do we do when a family that does that owes two thousand dollars among them, we be.
Then it's our fault, our fault, nothing gets you that much money.
Really?
Yes.
Well, if we can't.
We have, also, if we cut off their water after the first ten days, if we let it go longer than that, it's our fault.
Okay, then we turn it off.
Yeah, we turn it off.
Okay. Then it's not paid, and then they go and maybe move it to another house, and when the water turned on, then what do we do?
No, you don't, if it's in their name.
But they're doing it different names.
They're doing it different names, you can't let somebody else's bill on to somebody else's.
And I think that's common knowledge, but they were just trying to get it collected.
Right, but.
And it doesn't help them to collect it. And as long as they're out there with the water, you know, the bill goes with the property. That's what, that's what I was with, and I would just think that the city would probably have that.
Form bill has a regulation on that. Is it agree or you, I, you know, possibly do away with it? I don't want to do anything. Right.
Yeah. I mean.
I got it, you're clear there.
Y'all are moving, and you can see the bill somewhere else, you shouldn't have to take the bill.
Yeah, I didn't say either we were, I didn't.
But we were down, we were forced, we were forced, forcing somebody to pay somebody else's bill.
Well, it's because they were living with them.
Right. But it's, it's a separate account.
It's a separate account, but they are in terms for two thousand dollars.
I don't know, that person wasn't in just for two thousand dollars.
The family.
Well, I don't, and that's, you're gonna take it with the family, you don't have to take their account.
I'm just.
You can't, and here's the other thing, I've asked them why we didn't shut the water off the first month, even behind.
How long ago was like this?
Oh, what was that, year and a half ago, year ago?
We all know why.
And, and so, we should have shut the water off, we should have taken their deposit, and applied a deposit to the bill. Well, we don't have a record of a deposit. And that's our fault. Okay? So, and it's my understanding, we kept charging them a minimum every month, even though the water been shut off. And we can't do that. So I mean, I'm just saying, one thing after another, that we need to fix in the policy.
That's what we do.
And, and so that's why I'm bringing it up, to make sure that that's not just a one night deal, we can do that with anybody. And another thing, another individual comes in, and he says they asked for their water to be shut off. And they said, well, I have a deposit to my water bill, and they said, you don't have a deposit. I had to get water personally, had to have a deposit.
Not necessarily.
No, if it's in our policy, they have to have a deposit to get water.
Is it in our policy?
We turn on water without deposits.
Well, when, a long time ago.
A long time ago, yes.
I don't have an deposit on mine, and I've had it for thirty years.
This, this person is an engineer.
So I'm just starting.
I have found a lot of.
Always done deposits, as far as I, I know. Since I've been on, well.
I can't find documentation on the water.
Right.
Look, did, I have a question, did you guys ever find that it varies by, some people might have deposits and others don't? I mean.
Finding out.
I mean, nine to thirty years, since I have a deposit, and you guys might not even have a record of that, but I might have that record someday.
You hear anybody?
Yeah.
But I paid it for a deposit, and that was in two thousand and seven, so that varies, I guess, that.
Yeah, because when I paid a deposit in nineteen ninety-four, it was much less than it is now. I think it used to be sixty dollars, and we went up because they were leaving us with such high bills, we upped the deposit on it. And we may need to do that again.
Well, I'm doing some research on what other towns are doing on collection and on deposits. I'll bring that over. Right, and that's why I bring this up, of course, to look at and try to get a spin policy.
Yeah.
So we can tell everybody the same thing.
Well, Jack has just said that for sixteen years.
We've been delaying deposits that I know of for the last sixteen years, what was before that, but Donna said she's had hers for thirty. I don't think I have a deposit, I don't think. I know, we feel like what the policies were, or I'm like, that, or we should have been delaying deposits.
Well, see, we have some accounts that are, you know, multiple accounts, for the way you're on. Charge them to their own. Pleasure for good value, or something. You know, like I said, it's good, Donna come in tomorrow, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna bottom of the building, or I'm gonna draw a deposit. Actually, the board member will do that, but anybody who pays every month, it's good, you know, it's good business. But there's no written policy.
And we need to.
That's a problem. But almost all local account owners don't have local deposits yet. But that's, they're all, you know, one deposits. But you're right, it's not written.
Okay, let's, I wanted to discuss just for another minute, you're talking about, somebody saying have a new account, it should go with a property owner. However, it looks to me like it could be a scam to go and change around, because somebody or people will go and new the lot. So could you not make a policy that they list everybody that lives in that household? And require identification?
I'll follow that. I'll follow that.
Yeah, that's.
Are you running, are you running a whole mill, so you can do that? So it's a good chance that you can, so.
So who needs to write a.
John will have to.
Certification.
John, join in for us.
I, Guthrie has a real good idea on the policy style, but I'll bring you.
Great.
Item number nine, discussion in action on time compensation policy.
I brought that up during the budget process, I asked for comp time, and how much comp time we actually had with all our employees. And when I dig dug it up. We've got approximately twenty thousand dollars in unfunded liability from comp time. That, twenty thousand.
And that's not as much as it was, it has come down.
And it's not in the budget, so I mean, if these employees decided to quit, retire, what do you have to pay? And if there's money in place to cover it, what do you do? So we've got a twenty thousand dollar liability against us right now, if we don't have anybody paying to get it again. So I'm saying, we've got to sit down and reevaluate what we're doing on comp time. Like I said, when you're doing comp time, you're paying time and a half, I mean, it doesn't sound like it because you're trading out. But I said, somebody works forty-two hours, they're getting three extra hours, three hours of comp time. So you're paying basically time and a half, while somebody's making twenty dollars an hour, that comp time is basically costing you thirty dollars, you know? And are we better off hiring part-time employees and not having comp time? I mean, we're just putting this out here for us to be thinking about it, because we do have a lot of comp time.
I thought, I, excuse me, ma'am, I should say something?
Thank you.
I always thought that this trade mind was like time off and rule of pay, I didn't know that it involved like getting paid.
It is, but you get time off, but you get time and a half.
But you can cash in, like you said, if you're leaving, and you got two hundred and forty hours, and you're gonna get time and a half. Where was the precedence for that?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Part of our labor.
I think that's part of the labor.
Is it? So you got money? When I would, when at my job, I had a lot of this money, and that was just gone in my life.
Well, I think different businesses, like where I worked, changed their policy several years ago, and it's capped now, and you can take it or you lose it. But. Thank you.
And you're trying to say that if you got two hundred and fifty hours comp time, you don't get that time and a half.
Right.
The time and a half is already included in that. That's what I'm saying, it's included in that, in other words, it says, you're basically getting two hundred hours or a hundred and fifty hours you work over. Well, I think my home law is under pressure, if you had two hundred and fifty hours, you'd get that. No, no, you're getting the time off, the equivalent of time and a half. In other words, if you work fifty hours this week, you get to take fifteen hours off. And get paid greater or shorter than fifty hours on ten.
Well, see, it's also my understanding, and correct me, I don't know. Don't you have to take it in the same week or month you were supposed to? I know we're meant to, because you can't, you actually have to work forty hours that week in order to get comp time. You can work thirty-five, and then come back and work here more, and say, well, I've got five hours of comp time. It has to be, you have to work the actual forty hours a week, and that does want to include holiday time. Right.
And, and, you know, and that's another thing, we've got eleven days of holidays. So, yeah, we have eleven day holidays.
But you do the crisis.
Well, if you're in Florida. Well, it is, I think you can.
Part of it. I think you can.
Yes, you can, schools don't do all those holidays.
So what's term of leave, isn't that where at the end where you cash in all of your.
Comp time, yes.
You take it, you, you, you know, you're like not coming to work for twenty-four hours, but it's called term of leave, is that an option?
Or you get paid for it. Or work you quick, so you'll get that money.
I just didn't know it was time.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I really.
So I mean, we need to address the policy, and, and right now, by our policy, uh, the head of the department's supposed to authorize eating comp time, and authorize every time, eating, everything else, and they don't do that. Uh, so, yeah, so I'm just saying, all I'm trying to say here today is that they have twenty thousand dollars of unfunded liability. And we've got to figure out how to stop that. How about twenty thousand?
Well, as long as we're short on employees and things like that, they're gonna rack up comp time.
Well, my point is, if they're better working than our, our kind of person, that ten dollar an hour pays somebody thirty hour work of comp time.
With five minutes left.
You know, so I mean, we have to sit and address that, and what we're. That, that's all I'm saying here, David, and my last point is, I'm just saying, I'm pointing out the fact that we need to be aware of.
Item number ten, are you technically eligible? No action?
We don't have a further question.
By Angela, we need to go.
I have a question, I have to see it on here. We talked about it last time, that week, under the.
It's been fixed.
Oh, good.
And without, without any.
I couldn't have a week, that's whatever, anything, it was a lot. The only, I think the biggest thing we've lost is the four hundred dollar per description sum loss.
Oh, my goodness.
It was. They're in that hole up there.
And getting, was it seven and a half, and it's lying on the twelve, was that? Oh, it's twelve, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay.
What I don't understand, something that had up to me, uh, we got that water loss report. Did you see that, you saved the, what is that, I'm trying to find it?
There you go.
I had, so we're probably using about thirty or forty thousand gallons.
It was sixteen thousand a day for a while, I'm getting, it ever go up?
I think this was a little set amount of use.
Philip jumped, jumped.
He said it jumped, yeah.
Because we were having a hard time.
Okay, what, what was it done?
The last meeting, you mentioned forty-seven thousand a day.
Yeah. Right, and so thirty days.
I think it was forty-five, I remember, that's a few weeks ago. But yeah, it was like forty-seven thousand, that was a day that's gone out of that, so.
And that was a yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
That was a yes.
But while he was losing out on the land.
We were still ten percent, we're lower than ten percent water loss percentage with the major.
Ten percent's good.
Yeah, it's a real.
That's what I'm saying, ten percent's good.
That's what we are, ten percent's good, I'm not sitting here thinking, we had to have a few to leak, you know? It's good when we don't have any, that can't believe, so that's good.
Our guys are spending a lot.
Yeah, they are.
Item number twelve, approval rejected, entering into executive session, consenting at time twenty-five of the posits statutes three oh seven, reading one. Discussing employment, hiring, appointment, emotion disciplining or resignation of any individual, salary, group, public officer, or employee. Alan Nellis. Make a motion to approve. We have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Yes. Item number thirteen, approval rejected, exiting from executive session. Make a motion, Dan, that we have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item number fourteen, action within executive session. I made a motion to set Alan Nellis' pay at eight eighty-five now. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote. Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Bronn?
Yes.
Yes. No action on fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? We've got eighteen? Eighteen, nineteen, twenty? Twenty-one now. Item number twenty-two, is that correct? Discussion in action on the water.
We take action, we're done along the building.
Okay. Item number twenty-three.
Same with twenty-three, we actually have to submit on that.
Okay. Second night, it's, uh. Item number twenty-four, new business, any new business to work? Okay. Item number twenty-five, board member comments? Any board member comments? Item number twenty-six, make a motion or return. We have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Yes.
Donna?
Donna?
Bronn?
Yes.
Yes.